To order the Brownsville Independent School District's Board of Trustees, regular board meeting scheduled for today, September 5th, 2006, at 5:30 at the Administration Building. Will everyone please stand for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance? And Mr. Powers, you have some comments?
Yes, Mr. President. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, we want to send our condolences to the Senator Lucille's family. His father just recently passed away, so we want to send our blessing and love to the Lucille family.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor thy text, flag. I pledge allegiance to the text as one and indivisible.
Thank you. Move on to four, roll call. Everyone's present, with the exception of Mr. Kalunga, and I believe he must have, he might have class tonight, so. All of us are here, with the exception of Mr. Kalunga. Number five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of September 5th, 2006, with any corrections, Mr. Gonzalez or Mr. Kalunga.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Yes, there are some corrections and deletions. Under consent agenda, item A-11 will not be addressed tonight. That's A-11. Also, item A-14, pages 95A, 95B, and 95C are to be included as part of the agenda backup. Also, item C-18 will not be addressed tonight. That's C-18. Under close meeting, under personnel matters, item A-30, pages, page number 213, will be replaced, and changes are highlighted. That's page number 213 under A-30. Page 225 and 226 under A-33 will be replaced, and highlight, changes are highlighted. And then for item number A-35, pages 231 and 232 are to be replaced, and the changes are highlighted. Also, item A-39 will not be addressed tonight. That's A-39.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Move. Second.
Motion, a second to approve tonight's meeting. All those in favor, signal by raising your hand, say aye. Aye, motion carries. Move on to item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of August 15th, 2006, the minutes of the special call board meeting of August 23rd, 2006, and the minutes of the special call board meeting of August 31st, 2006, with any corrections. Is there a motion? A second?
Second.
Okay, any comments, Mr. Munoz?
Yes, Mr. President. I have additions I'd like to consider on, for the August 15th and for the, for the August 31st meetings. On the, on the August 15th meeting, on page 009, I think it's important that we, we note the details here. Item eight, we were talking about defibrillators. Refer you to Mrs. Fox, asked Maria Castillo, Administrator of Health. What I'd like to add is, it says regarding the defibrillators. To make a brief presentation to the Board regarding the defibrillators, I'd like to insert between the defibrillators, the words "the proposed purchase of 50 defibrillators." That's what was mentioned. The next item that I would like to add is the, the next sentence attributed to Mr. Munoz, says "a survey to find out exactly how many defibrillators are needed district-wide. Munoz recommended 50 to 65 be purchased." I would like to add that. The next item, Dr. Escobedo asked the Administration to provide a copy. He wanted the specs. I'd like to add an item right after that, saying, "Mr. Powers, Mrs. Galván, and Mr. Munoz recommended that all schools and facilities be provided with defibrillators, and that the purchase of 50 would be inadequate." I think it was a consensus of opinion that, that 50 was not adequate. We recommended that they be provided to all facilities. And the last item, at the very end, I would like to add, "Interim Superintendent Gonzalez promised to conduct a need study and soon revisit the issue." On the August 31st meeting, on page, I believe it's 28, about the middle of the page, right before the handout, added to official meeting, minutes. To be consistent, I would like to add that Mr. Munoz noted that the bond draft data in the agenda would be superseded and updated by the actual pricing report, which was distributed by Mr. Inahosa. That, that report should be part of the minutes, in my opinion, because the, the minutes contained, the, the agenda contained a draft, and, which changed dramatically. The second item is below Section B, on the same page. Several Board members expressed their concerns that the Board had not received a detailed report regarding the total cost versus the 221 cost. Scratch the 221, and I would like to add, versus the indicated 221,202 dollars and 50 cent TPA service fee. We were discussing the, the TPA service fee, which was 221,202 dollars and 50 cents, not 221. That's all I have, so.
You concur, Mr. Gonzalez?
That's fine. We'll make the change.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of item six. All those in favor, or is there a motion? No, motion, second. There was a motion, a second. All those in favor, signal by raising your hand, say aye. All those abstaining or against?
I'm standing for the August 15th and voting for the 23rd.
You got it, Norma? Okay.
I'm abstaining from the 23rd, August 23rd meeting.
Okay, did you get that, Norma?
August 23rd meeting.
Mr. Kalunga's abstaining on the August 23rd, and approving the rest, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Then, item six carries. Move on to item seven, Superintendent's Report A, Conference Presentation One, Recognition of 2006 BISD Recognized Campuses. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. It's a real honor tonight to have the camp, the 27 campuses that have received recognized status from TEA. We have the principals, parents, students here, and at this time, I'd like to ask the Board to step down, to be able to give the students and the principals and the parents a, a recognition of a plaque and a, and a banner.
Mr. Lehman, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, it's an exciting night. You just have to look around the room and see that we have the largest number of recognized schools in the history of Brownsville ISD. We have 27 recognized schools. This is a moment for us to celebrate, to relish this, to take pictures, and everyone gets a plaque and a flag. It's very exciting. Just a reminder, to receive recognized status, campuses are required to have 70 percent passing rate for all students in reading, English Language Arts, writing, mathematics, social studies, and science for all applicable subpopulations. And each campus is represented tonight by their principal, a teacher, a parent, and a student. So without further ado, I'll ask the campuses to come forward when we call their name, starting with Lucio Middle School. Rose Longoria is the Lucio Principal, and the Area Assistant Superintendent is Mary Our second middle school to achieve this distinction is Stell Middle School. Our third middle school is Vela Middle School. Sylvia Centeno is the Principal. Now we begin with our elementary schools. E.J. Martinez is the Aiken Principal, and the Area Assistant Superintendent is Mary Next, I'd like to call on Burns Elementary. Next up is Castaneda Elementary. Esmeralda G. Tomes is the Principal, and the Area Assistant Superintendent is Rachel It's now my pleasure to call on Champion Elementary. Congratulations, Champion Elementary. Let me now call on Cromack Elementary. Carmelita Rodriguez is the Cromack Principal, and the Area Assistant Superintendent is Rachel Congratulations, Cromack. Next, I'd like to call on Dell Castillo Elementary. Jose Luis Poy is the Dell Castillo Principal, and the Area Assistant Superintendent is Rachel Congratulations, Dell Castillo. It is now my pleasure to call on Egley Elementary. Christina Bridgewater is the Principal. Congratulations, Egley Elementary. Next up is Gallegos Elementary. Congratulations, Gallegos Elementary. Next, I'd like to call on Garden Park Elementary. Charlie Garza is the Garden Park Principal, and Area Assistant Superintendent is Brett Springston. Congratulations, Garden Park Elementary. Next up is Gonzalez Elementary. Congratulations, Gonzalez Elementary. Now I'd like to call on Longoria Elementary. The Principal is Marina Flores. Congratulations, Longoria Elementary. I'd like to now call on Martin Elementary. The Principal of Martin Elementary is Sandra Rodriguez. Congratulations to Martin Elementary. Would representatives from Morningside Elementary step forward, please? Dolores C. Emerson is the Morningside Principal, and Area Assistant Superintendent is Mary Congratulations to Morningside Elementary. Next up is Ortiz Elementary. Congratulations to Ortiz Elementary. I'd like to now call on Palm Grove Elementary, please. Lily Casares is the Palm Grove Principal. Area Assistant Superintendent is Mary Jo Monfiles. Congratulations Palm Grove. Next I'd like to call on Paredes Elementary. Jay Harris is the principal, the area assistant superintendent is Jenna Hawkins. Congratulations Paredes Elementary. Next is Pettis Elementary, Ruben Martinez is the principal. Area assistant superintendent is Jenna Hawkins. Congratulations to Pettis. Next up is Putinet Elementary. Principal is Ernestina Trevino, area assistant superintendent is Rachel Ayala. Congratulations Putinet. Now I'd like to invite the representatives from Rosaca Elementary to come forward. Carlos Paredes is the Rosaca principal and area assistant superintendent is Rachel Ayala. Congratulations Rosaca. Next we'd like to invite Russell Elementary to come forward. Bill Gutierrez is the Russell interim principal and area assistant superintendent is Brett Springston. Congratulations Russell. Next up is Sharp Elementary. Terry Alarcon is the Sharp principal, area assistant superintendent is Rachel Ayala. Congratulations to Sharp Elementary. Like to call the representatives from Victoria Heights please. Blanca Lombari is the Victoria Heights principal and area assistant superintendent is Jenna Hawkins. Congratulations Victoria Heights. Next up is Viennueva Elementary, Michael Moreno is the principal and area assistant superintendent is Brett Springston. Congratulations Viennueva. And number 27 out of our roll call of recognized schools, Eteria Elementary. Norma Linda Gallegos is the Eteria principal and area assistant superintendent is Brett Springston. Congratulations Eteria. This concludes our presentation of the 2006 BIST recognized campuses. Congratulations to everyone involved in this achievement. You make our district and our community very proud.
Thank you very much Ms. Brown. Item two, notice and order for the BIS trustee's election.
Thank you Mr. Lehman, members of the board. I'll call Ms. Berta Pena to do this presentation, a brief presentation and then if you have any questions.
Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Lehman, members of the board, on Tuesday, November 7, 2006, a board of trustee election will be held for positions one and two. Both positions are for three-year terms. The changes in the early voting and the election day polling places will not adversely impact or otherwise discriminate against minority voters. As you can well see, we have two jam-packed weeks of early voting locations available, which will allow many of our citizens to go and vote. Plus, we have a Saturday and Sunday and for the first time that I know of, many churches have participated in our early voting locations. We've added five new polling places on the election day and 15 new early voting polling places. I believe that a letter to the United States Justice Department will be submitted with all the changes for their review. I don't foresee any problems because this is in conjunction with our joint election county elections and it makes it more accessible to all voters. Any questions?
Pena, I see you're very enthused so.
Thank you sir.
Mr. Munoz go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a question on how will we handle the parcel, partial precincts? We have seven partial precincts, how will they be handled? Do we have any idea?
Will you please, I'm not sure if I understand.
We have, we have seven partial precincts. Four, 14, 17, 48, 54, 68 and 74. In other words, some of the people in these precincts will be eligible to vote for BISD. How are we going to address that during the election? Well, we have two different ballots for say precinct 14. Or one ballot, how is that going to be addressed and will there be maps to determine who's eligible and who isn't, that sort of thing?
That is correct, Mr. Munoz. And Villarreal Elementary School is precinct four. They will have two ballots, one for the BISD trustee election and one for their own.
Okay, good. I would suggest that if necessary, we can provide maps, I would think, to the administrators. Let me just ask a question. We really have no say-so whatsoever in choosing the judges or locations or anything like that in this election, am I correct?
From what I've read, sir, and I've included in your packet, House Bill 1209 requires that the county will determine the polling places and the other entities must use these polling places to the extent that they have overlapping territories. I understand that the order and a notice of this election will be in conjunction and that I plan to bring you next board meeting with all that information.
You're absolutely correct.
Thank you, sir.
What I was trying to point out is since, because we have no determination in this election whatsoever, I would think that this would be an argument for, in our favor, that any costs incurred might be minimal. Certainly not the same cost that we would have to come up with for a May election in which we have joint and multi-partite elections. The county by virtue of the constitution of the state of Texas is required to set aside monies for these elections. So adding two places at the bottom of the ballot shouldn't, shouldn't cost very much. And certainly we furnish something on the order of 37 of these locations at no cost to the county. I think that should be taken in consideration when we get our billing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Gonzalez?
If there's any other questions?
Additional comments? I just want, as far as entering into, into an agreement with the county, how's that going to work, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Ms. Pena is working with Roger Ortiz, administrator for elections and we'll be bringing that in the next board meeting, exactly how we're going to enter this into agreement. But it'll be in agreement with the rest of the county that's having their November election. So in all probability, there will be some costs, I don't know exactly how much. But as soon as we get those figures in, we'll bring them to you. As they come in, I might even get them to you before the board meeting. That way you'll know exactly what it is and have the opportunity to ask questions before the next board meeting. So again, as soon as we get those figures and how the agreement's going to read, I'll forward it on to all the board members.
I had, to keep everyone in the loop here, I had a conversation with the superintendent and suggested that we talk to Tasby, we asked Tasby. I'm sure that this question is being asked by other entities that are having November elections and Tasby probably has talked to Elizabeth Henshaw at elections or the Texas Secretary of State to get a ruling on it. We look forward to seeing what Tasby has to say in this matter.
I'd like just to make a comment. I'm very glad to see that there's more polling places and also that there's like churches and places that people can go to and times to vote, there's even Sunday and Saturdays and there's no reason why more people should not go out and vote.
Additional comments? Okay, move on to item three, notification of betterment fund change orders and contract change orders.
Yes, if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Comments? None? Okay, move on to item four, presentation of the Brownsville Independent School District's financial report for the period ended July 31, 2006. Should this item, I thought it's on the third, on the second, on the last Thursday, on the last meeting, on the third Tuesday. But anyway, I'm glad that you guys are moving forward. Anyway, Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Yes, this reflects the first month of the fiscal year and call Mr. Sanchez to give a brief presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, board members. It's a new format that, if you see, we added a column there for budget adjustments, which entail all your carryovers and any amendments that we bring to you. So that sort of isolates that and it carries over to the next column. The only thing that I think we need to probably highlight is on page 49, you see a, on federal revenues there, you see that we budgeted about a million, 137, and we got 3.5 million. That's because we are entering into the SHARs program. And they had gone back, remember, we brought a gentleman in from Houston to explain to you how some of the personal care services were being handled. Well, now we're going back and retroactively, we're getting some of this money. So you see a big jump there, which is good for the district. So they're going back and actually making these retroactive reimbursements for the district. So you can see a significant increase in that one particular line item. So you can see a, a significant increase in that one particular line item. The rest of it is, is, is pretty much, I know that Food Service told me that they had an additional $90,000 on page one, page 50, that, that got in revenue. And, and you say, well, you know, the revenue is not there, so the expenditures are running ahead of revenue. That's always the case with any, any of these reimbursement programs. We've had to spend the money first, and then we submit for the reimbursement, and the revenue keeps coming. So eventually, hopefully by the end of the year, we catch up and it evens out.
You else?
Yes, I had, I'm sure it's a simple answer. In, in the back of my head, and I'm sure my colleagues remember the number, 451, a $451 million budget. I, I don't see that reflected anywhere here.
Gonzalez?
I'm waiting for him to recognize.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Board members, no, because this is, does not include the federal programs, and federal programs would bring us to 451.
Okay. On, on page 48, I noticed that, that on local revenues, what we, what we were showing, what we were given in the budget during the budgetary process in June, we had 67.9 was the number. This is 69, it's, it's 1.8 million more, which, fine. State revenues, our budgetary process showed 276.9. This, this report shows 282, so 5.3 million more. Bottom, bottom line is, I'm seeing 7.1 million more in revenues than the budgetary number. I, I think you, what, just counted for several million on food a moment ago?
No, sorry, if you remember, I, I was doing the research this morning too, because I said, somebody's going to ask me this question, so I went back and, and I, June 22, we had a, a meeting, and there was a budget, you might be looking at the June 22 budget.
Oh, that was a proposed, I've got, I've got the final one here.
On the June 27?
Yeah.
The June 27, because I did go back and, and, and asked to see these particular numbers. And of course, you have to look at them with or without Food Service. And I checked the numbers, and if I pulled Food Service out of there, and it matched up with Food Service, and I pulled out, then I left the general funding, and checked out also with, with the budget what was approved on that day.
Well, the Food Service numbers are very, are quite consistent with, with this. But like I say, there's, there's 7.1 million more in revenue that, that we found somewhere, which I'm not.
That's your debt service?
No, that was there. That, that hasn't changed. The debt service hasn't changed. I didn't see any change on that.
Because on this page, we do include debt service, and debt service is 7, 7 million.
So the answer to my question is, is that this, this format does not include the federal monies?
That's correct.
Why not?
You want, you want a general operating budget, we could incorporate it if you want to, federal monies, but, I mean, I don't know, we, we only bring the general fund.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lehman. As to, to answer the question is, we've never brought the federal funds in as far as consideration as part of the general budget, because it is categorical funds. However, if it's the board's desire, we can always include it as, as part of the presentation, and we'll go ahead and do that. And I'll have Mr. Sanchez note it to go ahead and develop another page for, for 211 and 212.
Because if you, if you notice, we've had some confusion over, over the salary numbers, and so all those are federal salaries, and, and this is what we approved, 451 million, and we should be trending off of the same numbers.
That, that should not be a problem. We'll go ahead and include it the next, in the next time, put the categorical funds in there, too.
Great.
Okay.
Additional comments? Okay, so what does this do to CFA Local? What, what are you going to bring us on the 19th? So you already, you won't be having a report, or you'll have another report?
Concerning the presentation, this, Mr. Sanchez?
Well, I mean, the financial report is a monthly thing, and it's on the second meeting of each month, so I'm just.
Did we get ahead of ourselves there, Mr. Sanchez, and then brought it in the first board meeting rather than the second board meeting of the month?
Probably did.
Decided that we have a new format for Mr. Munoz.
I understand.
Okay, well, we'll adhere to the second board meeting of the month.
That's fine.
Okay, so maybe we'll have the, the categorical funding and federal funding on the next one?
We can do that, yes.
Okay, very good. All right. I'll move on to five, presentation of perfect attendance. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Reason we put this item in is because I know there was a concern by some board members about concerning perfect attendance. We have not had a perfect attendance stipend since 2002, 2003 school year, and with, we're in the process, Mr. Peñez, and his staff are in the process of doing a complete analysis of how much it would cost, what, how we did in 2002, 2003, and, and prior years concerning perfect attendance. Once we compile that, we'll bring it back to the board for consideration. I just wanted to let you know that we haven't forgotten. We are doing our homework on this, and then we'll be presenting something to the board at a later date. I just wanted to bring that up to the board.
Additional comments? Doctor?
Just very briefly, I'm glad that we haven't forgotten, because I think a perfect attendance stipend would be a, an excellent incentive for, for our teachers.
Additional comments?
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir. Mr. Colunga?
Are, are you considering also, Mr. Gonzalez, on the, the past performance of that particular stipend, and whether it's actually improving attendance, or, I know there, there had been in the past some abuse of the system based on failure to report the absences on some campuses that ended up coming out as a perfect attendance, or some individuals that were not entitled to perfect attendance. Is that being looked at also, how it's worked in the past?
Yes, sir. Mr. Colunga, just to, to address the issue, we are looking at all aspects of it, looking at how we, how it worked in the past and what ideas we might have to incorporate if we decide to come back with a recommendation on perfect attendance. It's something that needs to be reviewed by the, by the entire board and our staff. And once we make a determination as to which way we're going, we also have to have accountability in the system, which would ensure that, that nobody's covering for anybody else concerning that area. So we'll be, we'll be addressing all the issues, and I think that those people that are in the classroom, we all know that if a teacher's in the classroom, learning's taking place, and we like to have the teachers there. And if it's an incentive to be there all, every time, every day, and to schedule around their teaching day, other important issues that they might have, it certainly enhances learning, and that's what we're all about. So we'll be looking at that and some accountability factors into it.
Mr. Powers?
Thank you, President Lehman. Yes, Mr. Gonzalez, I think, when, when we adopted it back in, I think, 2000, 2001 or something like that, it was roughly between 1.2, 1.5 million dollars. I'm not definitely sure, but I know when we did it. It went very well for three years until after old three, so that'd be a good idea to look into it. I agree with the, what you're doing on that. Perfect attendance, to me, is something that is an incentive for the employees, and I, I support it. If you have, if we can afford it, I support it.
Additional comments? Mr. Gonzalez, then what would be the format to, to excel, or to, to review this in a more accelerated fashion, so the board members can have input and, of course, have your administration's input also? Is there a workshop format that you recommend, or are you just bringing something to the board?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. To, to address that issue, no, we're, Angelina, you know that we're all looking into it. I will probably bring it into the committee meeting, to the Budget Finance Committee, to be able to address this and be able to, to ask questions and, and really give a good presentation in an informal setting, workshop-type setting. And then we get, once we get all the questions answered and get a sort of consensus, then we'll bring it to the board for some type of adoption, if need be.
Timeline for that, more or less?
I'd like to go ahead and do it this fall. So I hate to paint myself down to September or October, but it will be done this fall.
Okay, because I guess time would be of the essence if we're going to implement something like this, or institute it for the last semester. But, I mean, that's something to consider. But anyway, because I think our employees, our teachers respectfully would like to know where we would stand on this issue. Any further comments? Okay, thank you very much. B, standing board agenda item six, board calendars. Mr. Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. There's some important dates that are coming up here in September. One is this Thursday, we have a curriculum committee meeting that I think is very, very important at 5:30. We'll be covering some definite issues in curriculum. Also, we have, at 9:30 in the morning, we have a welcome back district parent meeting at the event center. So if some of you can make it, I'm going to be there at 9:30 in the morning, so will my staff. As far as, as the other meetings, they're there, we have board meetings. We do have a training for SBDM members that does not show on your calendar on the 23rd of this month, that is required by law to teach all new SBDM members, give them the training. And of course, in the month of October, the first week of October is very, very important. We have open house. On Monday, October the 2nd, we have open house for elementary. On Tuesday, the 3rd, we have middle school open house, and on Thursday, the 5th, we have high school open house.
Additional comments?
Yes, sir. I'd, I'd like to, to ask the administration to, to schedule a, a facilities meeting, committee meeting, as soon as possible, as soon as they're prepared. And also, we need to schedule a, a internal audit meeting.
Yes, I was looking at those for next week, trying to confirm a date with you.
Great.
Before I announce a date.
Thanks, sir.
Additional comments?
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir.
I wanted to ask Mr. Gonzalez, on the insurance committee, is there something planned for that also in the near future?
We have, Mr. Colunga, we have quite a few committee meetings that we need to get in within the next two weeks. We've settled on the curriculum committee this, this week. We also need to have facilities audit. Of course, we definitely have to have policy, and, and then have to have the insurance committee meeting. Luckily, Mr. Lehman has agreed to call a special call board meeting if need be for the insurance committee, so it gives me a little bit of flexibility. But it will, all of those committees will be done within the next two weeks.
Mr. Gonzalez? Okay, thank you. Move on to item eight, public audience. The next item on our agenda is the public comment period. This is a time for citizen staff or students to provide their comments to the board. Statements and questions from the audience will not be permitted during other portions of the meetings. So please let us hear from you now if you have comments to present. To have your comments heard tonight, your name and the subject matter of your comments must appear on the sign-in sheet, which is located in the rear of the meeting room. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes to complete his or her comments. With all due courtesy, I will strictly enforce that time limit. If a group of people want to be heard on the same topic, the board asks that they designate a spokesperson to avoid needless repetition. The board has adopted rules to preclude the abuse of open forum by, for example, anyone uselessly repeating the same comment or complaint, meeting after meeting. All participants must understand that if your comment, in my judgment, constitutes a complaint against an employee or a officer, I will interrupt and ask you to stop and direct you to proceed with the BISD's formal grievance procedures, be found in DGBA, FNG, or GF of our local policies. With those cautions in mind, we will now be glad to hear the general comments. Begin with, whoa, DeGoberto Barrera. Man, we haven't seen you in a while. Taxes, prospect, prospective, in, what is it, sir?
Superintendent.
Intran, yeah, I'm trying to read it, okay. Yes, sir, thank you, go ahead.
Honorable Board President, Honorable Board Commissioners, and my fellow Americans. As a past educator and counselor for 38 years, with four years in the Department of Education in Washington, and as a conservative, I'm concerned on the many superintendents we have had since I was a counselor here. First, it was Mr. Jackson, and then we had Mr. Raoul Bestero, and then we had Mr. Jack Ammons, and then we had Dr. Sendejas, Dr. Sauceda, and, and a two, a couple of interns, and the latest one, Superintendent Sorkowski, is gone. My concern is that I hope you board members have learned a lesson on selecting as a superintendent. Slow down on big, high salaries and a lot of freebies. It costs a lot of taxpayers' money to hire a so-called search firm to seek a super superintendent. If that is what you're going to do, just hire Senator Eddie Luzio, he's a consultant. Might be cheaper. First, do you really need a search company to look for a capable superintendent? Why not hire a local educator that knows the ropes of Brownsville? Give that hired person a short contract and see if that person can produce and be successful with less tax money. Second, don't give him or her a high salary plus all kinds of perks, medical, vacations, travel, transportation, car expenses, health insurance, and free bottled water. Understand that teachers get all free bottled water now. Remember that we taxpayers pay for all these perks. There are seven assistant superintendents. These high-paid people, if they do their right correctly, their job, then the hired superintendent is just a guide, a leader, and probably a spiritual leader. A bond issue was passed. The slogan was that there was a need for more classrooms. What happened to the three-story building on Elizabeth Street called Central Middle School? What happened to the high school that we went to? What happened to our Clearwater Elementary School? Those were plenty of classrooms in there to be used. The reason those good functioning buildings were closed as classrooms was because of mold, dangerous, and it would cause sickness for our teachers and students. Now the cleanup of mold is complete. The brave super administrators and staff with protective mold gear will occupy those buildings. There was plenty of parking lot. It's still a stadium for those people working there. What happened to the hollow claims of dangerous mold? Soon there'll be more administrators than we have students. Remember these areas are low-wage area. It's not an upscale area. 18,000 to 20,000 people complained to the appraisal district on taxes and, and high evaluations. Don't offer him or her, whoever you hire, a high salary until he or she can walk on water and produce and merit any raise. Don't get a superintendent that can play a musical instrument in. We have so many Mickey Mouse state and federal grant programs, all claiming a solution to our problem. Some directors are now housed in this place here, and now they're going to be housed at Palm Boulevard and Elizabeth Street. Be careful with our tax money. Remember what happened with the port. Twenty-one point three million dollars gone. Where? To the bridge of nowhere, Bahama Islands. Enough for tonight.
Mr. Barrera?
Thanks for freezing our taxes for those over 65. Already reached my 75 years. Don't raise our taxes anymore. That would be the greatest thing you people have ever done in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrera. The next person, is it Mr. Allegria, is that you? Robert Allegria? Taxes and miscellaneous? I mean, Robert. What did I say? Okay, not Robert, Albert.
Changing my name, Mr. Lehman?
Oh, no, no, I'm trying to read this thing.
It's okay.
I'm pretty sure it's you. Did you write this?
No, that's our executive director, Tom Pedede.
I was going to say, isn't that your handwriting? But it says Robert Allegria. Or is it Albert?
Well, we'll discuss that later.
Okay.
Good evening. President Lehman, interim superintendent, Mr. Gonzalez, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alberto Allegria, the proud president of the Association of Brownsville Educators. First, I would like to thank Mr. Gonzalez and the school board members for inviting the Association of Brownsville Educators to their bond underwriters conference. The conference was very educational and informative, to say the least. Thanks to President Lehman for allowing me to speak before the underwriter group, our community leaders, and the school board. community leaders, and the school board. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, believe that the administration and the school board of BISD is sincerely willing to work with us as true partners in education. As a majority of the employees of Brownsville ISD enjoyed their Labor Day this weekend, it continues to elude my imagination the fact that hundreds of employees of this district were laboring on Monday. The Association of Brownsville Educators affiliated with TSTA and NEA recommends to administration and school board members to explore the potential of allowing all ESPs or classified employees the opportunity to be off on Labor Day. All classified employees of BISD should also enjoy family quality time. AOB-E acknowledges that maintenance and security to our campuses are a priority. By allowing these employees time off, a cost to the... is a cost to the district, however, also beneficial twofold. It conveys a positive attitude to the workplace, and it generates quality work for the district. And it... Our rationale for the Labor Day off is that classified or ESPs are not monetarily compensated as well as a district may possibly do. Yes, recently, the district has made strides in increasing salaries for our ESPs, but we can improve. A day off after a lengthy summer work would be supportive of their needs and inspire gratification for acknowledging the work they execute. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, hope that our adamant consideration comes true for those whom have the least and need it the most. Technology support teachers. Brownsville ISD presently has TST, or Technical Support Teachers, responsible for two assignments. Some teachers instruct a few classes and then are required to do their technology trade. As you are well aware, BISD has thousands of computers in the district. The Brownsville Independent School District Technology Department, which encompasses Instructional Technology Department, there each technician has approximately six campuses to service. Work overload on the instructional is a reality. We hope Instructional Technology Department can meet the needs of campuses district-wide. Some campuses experience computer downtime, and downtime equals the student learning downtime. We, the Association of Brownsville Educators, support the idea of creating a full-time position to administer full-time technology support to administration, teachers, and staff. Technology support teachers are capable of being technicians, train other teachers, for example, great speed, and any other technology service. These teachers are a special commodity, just like all of our BISD employees, especially when your computer crashes. I challenge administration to ask principals at their next principals' meeting and to poll administrators of whether they would like to have a full-time technology support teacher on a full-time basis. I assure you, it will be a yes response. Please take time and consider our request. The Association of Brownsville Educators is supporting the increase of four cents property tax. By endorsing the property tax, we maximize the monies coming from the state. The tax increase also will ensure a growth in the fund balance, which in turn can be used for pay raises for all employees. Last but not least, the Association of Brownsville Educators welcomes back and supports the thought that administration and the school board are entertaining the issue of perfect attendance incentive. This is a form of working with employees to best address our students' academic success. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Albert Allegria. And we move on to item nine, close meeting as pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-four and five-five-one zero-eight-two. Board moves into closed meeting to hear level three, board review and grievance seven Board reconvenes after closed meeting to hear item nine and ten. Nine, board action on level three grievance. Lorraine Whitner, number... Excuse me, zero-zero-two dash zero-six slash zero-seven. Is there a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to remand the level three to administration to resolve in accordance with the parameters as discussed in executive session.
There's your second.
Second.
Motion, a second. Item nine, all those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And also, for the record, Mr. Colunga didn't show up. I forgot to acknowledge that. Item ten, board action on level three grievance, Deborah Hernandez, number zero-zero-three dash zero-six slash zero-seven. Is there a motion? Is there a motion? Motion dies. Move on to consent agenda, number ten. I have received a list of... From my colleagues indicating that there is no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. Items... Item under item A, recommend approval of the following general function items: thirteen. Under D, recommend approval of the following contract agreements: nineteen. Under E, recommend approval of the following requests for qualifications, RFQs. Excuse me. Item twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-six. Under eleven, closed meeting. A, personal matters, items twenty-seven, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four. And also, would like to entertain at the same time to change the order of the day on item forty, we will take that first pursuant to the... After the consent agenda is read. So will we take an item forty... Or I'll take it back. We'll be taking all of A, personal matters, into executive session preceding the consent agenda item, and we'll reconvene after that. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items as read?
Move.
Motion, a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda items as read. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now, item eleven, closed meeting as pursued. Uh... Well, we got this. I just included in there. That's fine. Yeah, I made it part of the motion.
Yeah.
And they agreed, so... We're taking forty. So we go on to item eleven, close... Closed meeting as pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section five-five-one point zero-seven-one, five-five-one point zero-seven-two, five-five-one oh-seven-four, five-five-one point oh-eight-two, and five-five-one point oh-eight-four. Board convenes into executive session or closed meeting for personal matters and other issues. At the same time, the board will hear item forty, recommend consideration and possible action on the recommendation of the independent hearing examiner in the Texas Education Agency docket number one-oh-four dash LH dash oh-six-oh-six regarding the proposed termination of the term contractual certified employee RM Texas Education Code, sections twenty-one point two-five-eight, twenty-one point two-five-nine, twenty-one point two-six-oh, and district policy FD... DFD legal and DFD local. Close meeting. Take item twenty-eight, recommend approval of contractual professional personnel for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year administrator or guidance and counseling, subject to receipt of all outstanding documentation. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion to approve, a second. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item twenty-nine, recommend approval of probationary contractual personnel for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year assistant principal, subject to receipt of outstanding documentation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion, and a second to approve item twenty-nine. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item thirty-one, recommend approval of probationary contractual personnel for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year cooperative education, BCIS, subject to the receipt of all outstanding documentation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, a second. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirty-five, recommend approval of term contractual personnel for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year reading first coach, subject to receipt of all outstanding documentation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
There's a motion, a second to approve item thirty-five. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. You, Ms. Galan and Mr. Munoz.
No, no.
Just go by.
I oppose it. Two? Okay, motion carries. Item thirty-six, recommend approval of probation contractual personnel for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year teacher, subject to the receipt of all outstanding documentation. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve the teachers.
I move to approve.
Move to approve teachers, a second.
I second it.
Thank you. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? No one. Wow. Item thirty-seven, motion carries. Item thirty-seven, recommend approval of term contractual personnel of the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year testing coordinator, subject to the receipt of all outstanding documentation. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion, and a second to approve item thirty-seven. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimous.
Oppose.
I'm sorry. Mr. Colunga, you're opposing?
Yes.
Okay, item thirty-seven, Mr. Colunga will oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-eight, recommend approval of incentive pay addendum to be utilized for district contractual employee eligible to receive incentive pay under the governor's educator excellence awards for two thousand and six, two thousand and seven. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Motion, a second to approve item thirty-eight. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Item forty, recommend consideration and possible action on the recommendation of the independent hearing examiner in the Texas Education Agency docket number one-oh-four dash LH dash oh-six-oh-six regarding the proposed termination of term contractual certified employee RM Texas Education Code, sections twenty-one point two-five-eight, twenty-one point two-five-nine, twenty-one point two-six-oh, and district policy DFD legal and DFD local. Is there a motion?
President?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt the finding of fact, conclusion of law, and adopt the recommendation made by independent hearing officer Linda Florida Resendez in docket number one-zero-four dash LH dash zero-six-oh-six, style of Brownsville Independent School District versus Rita Mills, and terminate the district's employment contract with teacher, Ms. Rita Mills, based on good cause.
Okay, then. Okay, motion. I want to make sure she heard it.
Second.
Motion, a second, to consider item forty. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
Against?
Stand on that.
Okay, Mr. Colunga will abstain on item forty. Motion carries. Okay. Consultation with the attorney, counselor. Excuse me. Move on to C, real property, forty-two. Discussion of possible acquisition or sale of real property. Recommend the purchase of real property, being eighty point twenty-nine acres of land, more or less out of a three thousand thirty point two-four acre tract, volume nine-four-one, page twenty-nine, deed records, and shares one and seventeen of the Espirito Santo grant in Cameron County, Texas, and being out of tracts six-eight-nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, seventeen, nineteen, described in good claim deed from Valley International Properties Incorporated to Real Robert Properties, dated March first, nineteen seventy-eight, and recorded in volume one thousand one hundred and seventeen, page three-twenty-four of Cameron County deed records, and authorizing the president of the board to sign all appropriate documentation. This item, previously approved on June twentieth, two thousand and six, but is being resubmitted due to change in the survey and reduction in the overall purchase price not to exceed one million eighty thousand dollars... Or eighty dollars, rather. Eighty thousand?
Eighteen.
Yeah, one million eighty thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
That will be abstaining on that motion. On that item, rather. So the item carries, forty-two carries. Announcements, forty... Anything else?
Linda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I was going to go home.
Oh.
Okay, now we go back.
Go back to item ten, consent agenda items to take up item twelve. Recommend approval of five additional fine arts positions for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Motion, a second. Discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to say that it is my opinion that we need full-time art and music teachers in all of our... At all of our campuses. I think this estimated cost of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is a problem, and I fully endorse this, but I would like to add that in addition to these five positions, I think we need to think about adding full-time art and music teachers, especially to our elementary schools, that I understand we do not have that at this point in time.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, members of the board. Yes, we've talked it over with fine arts, and this is the teachers that are in multi-media need. I met with Dr. Rendon and Alberta Peña, and we came with this and talked to Mr. Pineda, and we needed to open up some more slots. As a matter of fact, in the fine arts in the elementary grades, I think most of the time, they either have a full-time music teacher or a full-time art teacher. We're looking at possibly working with curriculum and revamping some of that, where kids will have exposure to both if need be, or however we can do it, and we'll come up with a plan in the curriculum areas to be able to address that in the future.
And I'm glad you're going to do that, and perhaps even if we can get all fifty-two campuses with choir and music, at least one art teacher per two campuses, some kind of a plan that we assure that we have, we can enhance the fine arts. If we have an arts academy over Lopez and we don't feed to that academy, what are we doing? And also, we need to understand our administration, our principals, and also the area superintendents. If a choir teacher is budgeted for that school, please do not say, "Well, I need a math teacher. I can use that money to get my math teacher," and forget about the choir. I think that has to stop. I think the direction of this board has been telling curriculum people that we need to enhance our fine arts department. This is just one department we're going to take this year, that we're going to take one at a time. It's about time we start enhancing this, instead of just cripple some of these fine arts. Would you please... That's my suggestion, sir, that they need to understand that is just as important as any other subject.
I agree with you, and we'll be working with that through the curriculum department.
Additional comments? Yes, sir, Mr. Parrish.
Yeah, President Lehman, I want to compliment Mr. Gonzalez. I'm glad you did bring this to the board to adjust the... Get five new positions, and it states here, assistant choir directors and piano companies. I mean, this is a step in the right directions. I think we're headed that way. And once you analyze the fine arts department, you come back with other recommendations, but this is a step in the right direction.
Additional comments?
There's a motion and a second to approve item twelve. All those in favor, signify by raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimous. Moving to item fourteen, recommend approval of resolution number ten slash oh-six dash oh-seven for the adoption of the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven proposed tax rate, recommended to adopt a tax rate of no more than one point four zero five four cents... I'm sorry. One point one dollar four zero five four cents per one hundred evaluation with a maintenance and operation rate of one dollar point three one five six cents and a debt service rate of point zero eight nine eight cents. Maintenance and operations, one dollar point three one five six cents, debt service, point zero eight nine eight cents, for a total of one dollar point four zero five four cents. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of one dollar and point four zero five four.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
A discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. President. The legislature requires that the motion be made as a... As an increase in the taxes because of the effective rate, which I don't have any problem with, but I think that the ratepayer should understand that the actuality is that we have this board, for the year two thousand and six, our tax rate was a dollar forty-eight fifty-six. So a hundred thousand dollar valuation would equate... So, a hundred thousand dollar valuation would equate to fourteen hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents. We have adopted, we are adopting tonight, a, a lower rate of a dollar forty fifty-four, which will, will result in, in that same hundred thousand dollar evaluation being, going down to fourteen hundred and five dollars and forty cents, which is an eighty dollar and twenty cent decrease. We anticipate next year, and, and I may be getting ahead of myself, but I can't help but, but, but state this, due to House Bill One, we are going to, it looks like taxes will drop to a dollar ten fifty-four, in that very close range, which will further reduce that hundred thousand dollar evaluation to eleven hundred and five, which will be a further three hundred dollar reduction. So, this is a two-step process, and, and we're, we're very pleased that, that we're able to, to, to keep these numbers down. And by the way, looking at, looking at some of the other, other districts in the valley, there's, I've got twenty-eight, eight schools, eight districts here I'm looking at, and of those twenty-eight, only three of them are lower than ourselves. So, at a dollar forty, Harlingen is at a dollar forty-two, at Couch Els is at a dollar fifty-four, Los Fresnos a dollar forty-five, McCallan's at a dollar forty-eight, Salmonito's a dollar forty-seven. So, we are doing very well relative to the other, other school districts in the valley, and I hope we can continue to do so.
Okay, uh, just for the record, I think the, the, the reason we're making this statement is because of the effective tax rate, and of course, we're higher than the effective tax rate, and that's why the language is the way it is, so people understand that.
Yeah, Mr. Lim, and if I may, just to declare it, our, our tax rate is being lowered, by a little lower eight cents, like Mr. Munoz said. So, in act, in actuality, this includes the, the four point two nine pennies that were needed for the new bond issue of a hundred and thirty-five million dollars. So, the, the voters are very gracious in, in allowing this to happen, and included in this, we were still able to lower their tax rate by eight cents, and a savings of already dollars for a hundred thousand dollar home. Mr. Munoz is correct, in the following year mandated by House Bill One, it will drop another three hundred plus dollars for a total savings of pretty close to four hundred dollars for a hundred thousand dollar home. So, I'm very proud of the fact that I want, that we recommend this, administration recommends this, and appreciate the support of the board for, for allowing this to happen.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Lim, I want to echo Mr. Munoz sentiments. At the same token, Mr. Gonzalez, you might want to tell the taxpayers by going to a dollar forty, how much monies are becoming to us because we're going up to a dollar forty?
Yes, uh, because of the fact that we, we added the four cents that's allowed by law to come in, this is money that's approximately eleven million dollar gain per year, which is a total of twenty-two million dollar gain in the next two years, and this is money that will come in for, for whatever needs the district might have, whether it be in educational needs, in academic needs, or in facilities need. We, once this is passed, then we'll come back with the board with a recommendation of how to budget the eleven million dollars that are coming up for this year. These eleven million dollars have not been budgeted and are not part of the budget process, so we'll look at it again through the budget committee, so how we're going to reallocate the eleven million dollars, or allocate the eleven million dollars that are coming, come in this year.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Lim, yes, sir.
Also, and those million dollars, is there a guideline to use them for academic, for certain special students?
On, on the new eleven million dollars that would be, no, there's no guidelines. This is strictly one ninety-nine money, so therefore, there's no strings attached. It will be up to the, to the board and the administration to make recommendations to the board, and to see how we're going to allocate those funds.
Okay, there is a motion to move that property taxes be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of one dollar point four oh five four cents. All those in favor, signal five by raising your hand, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimous. Move on to item fifteen, information discussion and possible action on the B I S D election candidate criminal background check. Mr. Munoz, you had put this item on the agenda. You wanted to commence with discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, I did. What, what, what I'm proposing, and I will make a motion tonight, is looking at B B A legal, which, which outlines eligibility and qualifications to be a candidate for this school board, and I'll, I'll read it quickly. To be eligible, one must be a U.S. citizen, you must be eighteen years of age of older, you have not been determined mentally incompetent by final judgment of the court, have not been convicted of a felony from which the person has not been pardoned or otherwise released from the resulting disabilities, be a resident of Texas and the district for the period of time described at candidate's residency term. In addition to that, to be, you must be a qualified voter, that you are over eighteen, you must be U.S. citizen, not determined mentally incompetent, has not been fully convicted of a felony, or if so convicted, has fully discharged his or her sentence, including any terms of incarceration, parole, or supervision. So, if, if someone is still under supervision or whatever, parole, they would not be qualified. Has completed a period of probation ordered by any court, or has been pardoned or otherwise released from the resulting disability to vote, is resident state, and is a registered voter. Because of this, I think that is incumbent upon us to utilize the district's resources to make sure that all candidates are qualified to be on the ballot. If, if we were to allow, and we do have the resources, get ahead of myself, we do have the resources to do criminal investigation background checks on, on individuals with, through our Region One contract. So, it, it just, if, if we were to allow someone to get on the ballot that we later discovered was not qualified for one reason or another to be on the ballot, that would cause tremendous problems and probably lawsuits from the other candidates because of the change in dynamics, and could actually even cause a, a, an election contest to be recast, which would mean we'd have to spend a ton of money doing it again. So, if we do not do this, and, and I'm not aware of us unless the administration would like to tell us that, that they do do these checks, I think that we should, we should make sure that, that, that B B A is, is confirmed, and that this happened before any names, any candidate's names be given to the election administrators, administrator for placement on the ballot. This has to be done, because once they're placed on the ballot, you cannot remove them, even if someone is declared not to be eligible, and it, it could conceivably, as I said earlier, affect the dynamics of that election, which would lead to lawsuits possibly. So, again, I move that, that the administration utilize its resources to ensure that all candidates meet legal requirements as per policy B B A prior to being placed on the official ballot.
Okay, can we continue with discussion, or?
Yes, sir.
Any comments from any of the board members?
Lim.
Yes, sir, Mr. Colunga.
In proposing this type of change, wouldn't it be necessary to go through policy or policy committee to review the matter and bring it, bring it back to the board as a recommendation?
May I answer that, sir? It, it, it is not a change. It is, it is policy outlined in B B A that, that these requirements must be met. I just want to ensure that that happens, and it is that we do due diligence and make sure that that does happen.
Well, I'm, just, Mr. Colunga, I'm reading B B A legal, and I guess the eligibility portion is the one you're making reference to, Mr. Munoz?
Yes, eligibility and qualified voter.
The one through five have not been final, I mean, I guess, I guess a question, counselor, would be, how, how is B B A legally enforced?
Mr. President, I had a discussion with counsel for Tazby this morning in regards to this agenda item. They have issued some cautions regarding how to go about this. My understanding is that in the application for candidacy, there is a question as to whether an individual has ever been convicted of a felony. According to Tazby's interpretation, and according to some feedback from the Attorney General's Office, it has not been in a written opinion, but there's, their advice is to look at the four corners of the application. Basically, have they filled in all of the questions and answered all of the questions regarding their criminal history, and if they've ever been convicted of a felony? If they indicate no, and there is no reason to believe that the individual is not telling the truth, then they recommend against doing these things, okay, at this point in time. If the individual misrepresents himself or herself in the application, then that is, that, that's, that's an entirely different, different ballgame, and could be grounds, as Mr. Munoz says, for all sorts of other, other issues. But the fundamental presumption is that the individual that fills out this application is filling it out truthfully, and if they answer the question about conviction of a felony that they have not been, that, that it ends there. The, the problem is, is that there's nowhere in policy that we're authorized to run criminal background checks on non-employees, which a trustee is. And as a result of that, we bump up against other penal code issues regarding who can run criminal background checks, and who is authorized to do so, and when can they run them, and with the frequency that they can run them. The, and, and that, that becomes an issue, because you can violate that. Lots of, for example, private investigators run into trouble and are oftentimes, you know, prosecuted for violating those aspects regarding criminal background checks. The, after discussion with them, what I'm recommending is that every candidate voluntarily sign an authorization that authorizes us to run a criminal background check. That way, it gets the district and any of its employees and, and H R or anywhere else that may be responsible for running these checks off the hook from any potential criminal violation. If the candidate does not agree to the authorization, well, then that can be made public for whatever reason, you know, it may do, but that's my recommendation at this point.
How do we incorporate that? Mr. Colunga raised a, a very good point. We don't have local policy to address this. This is all under legal policy. I don't think there's a local policy, does it?
No, there's not, and there's, one more thing, there's, there's nothing in the election code that I could find that would require these to be made, nothing that Tazby could find, unless, you know, there's something there that I know that would authorize an entity to do criminal background checks on any candidates for a governing body.
So, how do we, how do we get that questionnaire theory or questionnaire proposal incorporated into this election, if need be? But the other, the other issue would be that I, looking under B B A, qualified voter, if memory serves me right, you have to be a qualified voter to, to be eligible to be a candidate, and if you have a felony, you cannot have the right to vote, so, I mean, there's a check and balance there, technically. But I like the idea of a disclaimer, and I would like to also even take it further, drug testing, if, if, we'd like to make sure that our constituents know that you have sober people up here, that are not dependent on.
Mr. President, before, before we go on, we, we skipped past a point that, that the counselor made, and he pointed out that, that these were just recommendations. They, they, they are not, are not case law or anything of that order. He also stated that, that non-employees are, we, we check non-employees with criminal investigation checks all the time. Everyone who applies for a job here, and we, we consider hiring them, before we hire them, we do criminal investigation checks. Those are non-employees.
With authorizations and the non-employee, with authorizations.
I understand what he just said. I think I like the idea that.
Oh, I, I, I like it also, but I just wanted to make clear that, that we do do criminal investigation checks.
I like the idea that he's recommending because it puts us off the hook. And if the candidate does not want to subject, then that, that's, that's criminal in itself, so.
Then they can explain why, yes.
Yes, exactly. So, you got the, the best of two worlds, Mr. Munoz. Just keep on going forward. So.
Well, as, as I, as I said, we, we have a due diligence.
How do we do the mechanics now? How do you incorporate that into, if we don't have local policy? I mean, what is the, what's the execution?
I can direct administration to request this of all the candidates that are out there, and, and see if it, it can be carried out administratively, but I wouldn't do it without an authorization. Because as Mr. Munoz says, we do non-employees, we do non-employees that apply and give us an authorization, or we do non-employees who volunteer, and under the education code allows us to conduct a criminal background check.
By the way, the, the item reads.
So, that's why those non-employees are, are, are given.
The way the agenda item reads, it's very open.
Yeah, you can, you can put anything you want on there.
Yeah, so I'd like to hear from Mr. Gonzalez, would you have any problem incorporating that request in the packet for all candidates?
Thank you, Mr. Lim. It's, it, this is an item more left up to the board rather than to administration. Administration will do as directed. If the board desires that this item, that this be done, then we will take the authority vested into administration by the board to be able to do this. We have no recommendation one way or the other as to how to do this. This is part of the election code. It's more of a legal issue than anything else, as far as whether you, if this is voted upon, to go ahead and do it and instruct administrations to do it, we will certainly adhere to the, whatever you, the board requires us to do.
I guess my question would be, I know Ms. Peña is the.
Elections administrator.
Elections administrator, so, I guess the question would be, is there, there wouldn't be a problem to incorporate such a direction on the board to administration, to make sure that that is a part of the packet, and that document be in there, and it be in compliance, and it must be submitted. In other words, if they don't fill it out, does it have, I mean, the mechanics?
There's no requirement to fill it out. It would strictly be voluntary.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. So, they can say they forgot, or, is it, how do you incorporate this into strictly into, into a policy that, that is?
The only way to incorporate it into policy is through a policy meeting.
Creating policy, we don't have, because there could be.
If you do not want to incorporate it into policy and want to just make a directive to administration, now you can, I, I don't see any problem with that.
My question would be, is, if, if, if a, if a candidate would not fill it out, would it be, I mean, to what degree are, to what degree are we going to instruct the administration to call that, as a courtesy, call the administration or the, the office of the registrar, or elections administrator, rather, calls us to let us know that our, our reports are due, for instance? Or if something might not be complete or incomplete, that would be part of an understanding that a B I S D, that form is, should be turned in, and if it's not, there isn't really no enforcement. That's what I'm getting to. There's no enforcement of, of that. So, in other words, as long as the board understands, is that the way you want to go?
Well, I think, I think that we have to show that we've made an effort to do our due diligence. We saw what happened at the college, or what could have happened at the college, and certainly.
And at the city.
It wasn't as bad as it could have been.
But that, that would definitely open up some eyes, so, there again, any further discussion, Mr. Doctor Scuella?
Yeah, we seem to be focusing on criminal background checks, and that's fine. I have no problem with it, but if you're going to incorporate something like this, why not include a, something to, along the lines of just simply verifying candidate eligibility?
Yes.
By, by doing so, I think that would include criminal background check, and why someone, why an entity would not want to verify that their candidates are eligible, this is beyond me. Now, as far as the background checks and who we can and can't do, I mean, like the counselors told me on numerous occasions, when you place yourself in the public eye, you, you expose yourself to everything, and there's nothing you can do, so I think that's understood.
I, I agree with you, Dr. Scuella. I'm just concerned about the laws that are out there that limit, and the fact that there's no direct vehicle under the election code or under the education code, that I am aware of it. that I am aware of at this point in time, that Tasby's aware of at this point in time, that would make it mandatory. And, and our only concerns is the, is the balancing with the privacy issues and with the, with the penal code issues regarding when an entity goes around doing criminal background checks on individuals. That's the balance that, of the two issues that I, that I have of concern that are, that are before us right now.
Mr. Scovelo.
Does the applications ask, are you a registered voter?
I have no idea.
That would cover, because you cannot be, you know, if you're a felon, you cannot be a registered voter. So does the applic...
But, but I think it does.
I think it does.
Voter ID number, and if you've been convicted of a felony.
Yes, it does ask that.
So you have to publicly state that you have not been convicted of a felony.
Mr. Munoz, what is, I'm sorry.
You know, what we're discussing today is very important, and I agree to some extent that we need to be as clean as possible. In fact, I even support that those sitting here tonight can be randomly checked for alcohol and whatever it is, you know? I have no problems with it. My problem is that we, there's no set policy. And everything we do, we always go to policy committee, Mr. Doctor Scovelo. And here, all of a sudden, we're doing something out here in public, directing administration what to do. And see, that's the problem I have. Today is this, tomorrow, what it would be when there's no written policy? I think there's a couple of safeguards already if you're a voter and you have not been convicted of a felony. There's safeguards already that we can follow that. And the timing of itself, you know, especially when it's only about how many weeks for the election? Six, seven?
Eight.
Eight, eight, whatever. And what are we going to do with those guys that already pick up their packets and they, and they're filling in all that information? You see, the mechanics of it is, is what I'm very concerned about. But I agree that I just don't want anyone to be running for a position. But then, there's also a legal process doing things.
Yes, what, what I pointed out is, is what I want to do is I want to ensure, and we already have policy that makes it very, very clear, BBA, that certain parameters be met. We do have the resources to make sure that they are met. We do have a certain diligence to perform to make sure that people not be placed on the ballot that shouldn't be there, whether they live within the confines of the district. They have to live within BISD's district. I'm not saying that we're looking for people that have felonies or think they were paroled or set aside. There's some confusion in those areas also. But we need to make sure that whoever applies to be on the ballot is entitled to be on the ballot, that they are bona fide residents of the district, not that they intend to move here or something like that. We need to make sure that, that they do not have any felony convictions either in Mexico or Argentina or, or Ohio. And this is important, that this be done. It is not a problem. We have six or eight weeks to go. Well, we have probably four or five weeks to go before the names will actually be presented to the election administrator for placement on the ballot, which goes to the printer. So we want to do that before the names go to the election administrator and then end up being at the printer. And then maybe we have an election with, with names on the ballot that shouldn't be there. So we do have the time to do this, and we do have the, the policy that says this should happen. I'm just trying to make sure that it is accomplished. And we are not violating the law, as, as the counselor said. If anything, the most that could happen would be case law would be developed because of our actions. But we can do whatever we want here tonight.
But I think what you're alluding to is the enforcement aspect, and I don't think we have that authority. Now, as the election administrator, Ms. Pena, unless we direct to have some type of authority, because she is our local elections administrator, our district's election administrator. So she runs technically that aspect of the show. So I don't know by what, I mean, what parameters does she run the election for BISD, Counselor?
I, I just want to clarify something and make it real, real clear, all right? And with all due respect to Mr. Munoz and, and the difference of opinions that are being tossed out here, there is a prohibition against running a criminal background check. You have to have a specific authorization either through, we, like BISD does through the education code in checking volunteers, through individual applicants who sign authorizations when they apply, police agencies. There has to be specific authorization at law. If you do not have that, then that is my concern, that whoever runs these checks may be in violation of that law. That is my, and that's a penal code violation. And, and there's been several individuals in this city, well-known individuals, that have been prosecuted under that. And that's my concern. I don't want to get any employees in this district in trouble for violating the penal code on that issue. So that's, I just want that perfectly clear. I understand what Mr. Munoz is saying, but what we're talking there is presumptions, all right? When an individual comes and, and signs his application and sets, says that he has not, is that he's, he's a voter, that he's a resident, and that he has not been convicted of a felony, the presumptions go with him or her. It's not, he doesn't have anywhere in the law that I see an affirmative duty to, to prove that he's not lying. Okay? And that's, and that's where I think the difficulty is, is, and the other way, we're going to be presuming that everything on that thing is false and that we have to verify it. And I think that might, is where we might get into some problems. And that's what Tasby's concerns are on this.
What happens, I guess, I guess the, the advocate side of it is, what happens when you have something similar to TSC, when, when there's allegations of, of a candidate? And I think that's where Mr. Munoz is coming to.
I understand that.
If the law is saying you must comply, how do we make it?
I understand that there are going to be people that are going to lie on, on, on that. But generally, hopefully not people that are running for positions of trust.
In order for the district to, to, to do any type of background, then like you suggested earlier, to have that document part of the...
It'd be voluntary.
Yeah, they would have to sign.
And, and we understand that, Counselor. We, we understand that now that you've made it clear to us.
Everybody signs them, you know? They come apply for a job, you, you sign off on one.
And I can't, I can't imagine any candidate not wanting to sign one. Certainly, I, I can't, I don't see anybody here at this table that would not sign one. So...
Well, I would like to take it one step further also, and, and not, not just alcohol, but a controlled substance. I mean, smoking and alcohol is not going to, but I'm talking about, not vice, but controlled substance.
Yes.
Narcotics is, is what I was alluding to, and something that's illegal. But then, Mr. Munoz, I think we've kicked this around.
I can, I can change the motion if, if that would obtain a different motion.
Would you like that document to be the, the form that the counselor has requested or recommended?
We have it already in personnel. We have a standard authorization.
If we could, if we could change that motion to, to, to apply to candidates.
Mr. Powers, you have comments?
Yeah, Mr. President, I think, I mean, Ms. Munoz, you bring a valid point. But I think we have mechanisms in place with BBA legal, voter's registration card, and if something's wrong with a candidate, it's going to come out. I like what you said, Dr. Scovelo, it will come out. The thing is this, I think if we're going to change anything, it should be through a policy meeting and then develop a BBA local and attach that to the application for running for BIS trustee. But in the meantime, how are you going to make it retroactive? I think for us going up next year, we can put that part of a package and go with the BBA local and attach a statement. Now, as y'all know, as like Mrs. Sediana says, if an individual want to sign that, release a criminal background check, now you have something to say during the election, so they will sign it. But I think this should be done through a policy and do it appropriately and have really some major legal opinions, how we can adopt it in the package when applying for BIS trustee. Right now, I think it's premature, it's a little bit too late, and that way we can hopefully prevent it for later on.
Well, you know, what you say has, has some merit, but I, I have to dispel your notion that, that because you declare that, that you do not have a felony, we're protected. That is not, I can name at least two people, I can name one that was elected to a position here in Brownsville that is convicted felon, and we, of course, we know the other one. So because you sign, no, I do not, that, that does not mean that there are safeguards in place. Those safeguards have no teeth whatsoever.
But I don't think we're the governing body to, to, to be the law enforcer. That's what I'm afraid of.
We're not, we're not, I think the counselor has just simply said we add a document that is voluntary. And I think that's what we're going to hopefully agree on.
Independent what happens, time, Counselor, I'd like this on the next policy meeting, this issue of candidate eligibility.
No, I was going to say that I think we should go to the policy committee so we can discuss it more in detail, get all legal opinions. We're not, at least I'm not going to, I don't think I should put any BIS employee in a position that he's going to get hurt because of instructions.
I mean, depends on how, what the motion reads. I like, I like what the counselor just stated to us in, in order to be safe and get what I guess Mr. Munoz is trying to, to get to.
And that's what I just did. I amended the motion to make it voluntary.
The voluntary document be a part of the packet to begin with. And then we can evaluate and adopt in the BBA local policy, and we can, it can be a working document, a growing document, if so be it. So, Mr. Munoz, I'm sorry. Counselor?
Oh, I was just discussing some housekeeping here as to how we're going to amend the packages. We may have to send out amendments.
Well, I mean, my, my, technically, those that are already gone out, I'll, Ms. Pena would have to make a phone call and say, hey, come pick up one more form. I mean, that's not, that's not a problem. I'm just saying that Mr. Munoz, I don't know what, I mean, did you want to amend?
Yes, as, 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 as what we discussed, that we make it voluntary.
Well, you want to direct, motion to direct administration to make...
To, to, to make a criminal investigation background check voluntary for all candidates and that we utilize the same form that we use for, for pre, pre-qualifying employees.
Counselor, is that...
That's fine.
Okay. There's a motion. As you stated, Mr. Munoz.
As I tried to state, yes.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second?
I'm second.
Is this a motion, a second, to instruct administration to include as part of the application for trustee?
Voluntary.
To be, to include a voluntary form on background disclosure. Effective immediately, yeah. You'll have to notify everyone that's picked up a packet. With that said, there's a motion and a second on the floor, item 15. All those in favor signify by saying aye, raising hand. Aye. All those against? Motion carries. Mr. Powers, you're all red, why? Okay, motion carries. Item B, recommend approval of the following payments. Recommend approval to pay ACR Engineering Incorporated, nine thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars. Strash Consulting Engineering, three thousand eight hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Gomez Mendez Science Incorporated, excuse me, one thousand seventy-one dollars. BBK Architects, thirteen thousand four hundred sixty-four dollars. Professional Services Industries Incorporated, four thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars. Stanford Knowles Architects and Planters Incorporated, eight hundred thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. American Contracting USA, one hundred and two thousand six hundred forty-seven dollars and three cents. Circle Industries Incorporated, thirty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars and sixty cents. Donald D. Ferguson Incorporated, one hundred seventy-six thousand nine hundred dollars and forty cents for a grand total of three hundred forty-six thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and seven cents to be paid from local maintenance funds. A motion to approve.
Move.
Motion and second, discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, Mr. President. On this, on this item, I, I found no problems with the, with the, with the billing numbers. The, what, what I do have a problem with is the documents are very, very hard to read, particularly the Ferguson billing. I, I had a very hard time reading it and determining what the, the headings were.
Effects of the facts.
In addition to that, we apparently have changed our format in that we do not include unit rates or quantities in the bid packages. In other words, we have two-inch hot, hot pavement. The value is one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, and we're 20% complete. Well, 20% complete of what? One hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars? That doesn't tell me anything. There's, I, I don't know how our own people are verifying these quantities and the payments. I see here where we have 16% of the curbs and gutters are done. It's worth twenty-seven thousand dollars. Yet, I don't know how many curbs and gutters there are. I can say, well, I can multiply 0.16 times twenty-seven thousand dollars and, and come up with dollars, but that doesn't tell me how many lineal feet of curbs and gutters are done, nor does it tell me the value of a lineal foot of curb and gutters. So I see a divergence from, from the way we have been reporting our, our progress. We have deleted quantities and unit rates, which makes this document nearly, to me, worthless. To me, it's worthless. So I, I want to know what's going on.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman, Mr. Munoz. These are the ones that are verified through the architects as far as, and they do have the lineal feet and everything on them. These are the way the, the payments are submitted through the architect's office to us for approval. Mr. Tapia and his staff sit down with the architects and verify those numbers. Those are numbers that are totally verified through the operations area of, of the district. However, the board wants to see the cost per lineal feet and everything, we can certainly incorporate it and bring it in to you. And if, if it makes it more easily readable for you to, to do that, that's fine. But those things are being verified through the architect, which is what they get paid for, and through our staff to make sure that those are being done. But we can certainly incorporate the unit cost if you want to.
Yes, I, I see this as a divergence from what I've seen in the last three years. In the last three years, we have always had, for the most part, there's lump sum. And, and there's appropriate notations for a lump sum. If someone's carrying out a gate or something, lump sum, we don't need to know how many lineal feet of gate there are. But this, this is, I think, an obvious change. And we all know, and, and I can't, I'll have to stick it in you, in that on more than one occasion, our architects and our own staff have fallen down on the job and not, not been correct in their quantities and in their payments. And if, if, if I had 100% confidence in, in those two mechanisms, I, I wouldn't bother with this. But I think confidence has been breached on more than one occasion over the last three years. So I just respectfully request that we return to, to including the, the, the quantities, the contractual quantities and the unit rates for those quantities. And it's, and it's, it's a method that allows us as board members to periodically do, in my case, I look at unit rates and sometimes compare them with other entities, what they're paying for a five-foot sidewalk, for a lineal foot. I might see something here and go, gee, good lord, are we ever getting a good deal here? Or the opposite. So I think, I, I accept your, 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 your offer to return to the way we have been reporting it.
Staff is here.
And I think there's nothing to hide from, but this, this is less information than, than I would like to see.
Not a problem.
Thank you, sir.
Additional comments? All those, there's a motion, a second to approve, item 16. All those in favor signify, raising hands, saying aye. That motion carries. Item 17 on C, recommend approval of the following budget amendments. Recommend approval of budget amendment number 41 in the amount of sixteen million eight hundred thousand for fund 199 local maintenance construction funds, local maintenance fund balance. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve item 17, is there a second? Motion and second, discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, I, I would, I have my note here. Please explain, would, would, would you please explain what, what these numbers mean?
Mr. Lehman, members of the board, Mr. Munoz, this, this is a budget amendment of money that's coming out of fund balance. This is for proposed projects that we have coming up this year. As we all know, elementary number 141 was one that we promised that we were going to be doing from fund balance. So that's actually taking money out of fund balance and putting it and appropriating that money to be used for elementary... So, that's actually taking money out of fund balance and putting it and appropriating that money to be used for elementary one forty-one. So, as soon as we finish purchasing the land, we can go ahead and, and start solicitation and everything and be able to have that money as a budgeted item.
Okay, so, if, I'd like to interrupt you as we go-
Sure.
For clarification. So, this would, this would cover projected construction and land costs for our next elementary school? And this would not be one that would come out of the bond issue, is that correct?
That is correct, it's strictly out of fund balance.
So, this would be for land and construction and, and pre-construction costs?
Architect fees and-
Good, all right.
And the, the next one is the central annex renovation. That's it, renovation, that's the, the building right next to, or right on the corner of Elizabeth and Central. And that's been closed down and, and we've done some work on it, but we need to completely renovate that and hopefully utilize it for adult ed or, and so we need to have the money come out. And that's gonna come out of fund balance, that's not part of the project either for the one thirty-five million that we came out of.
Okay, excellent.
So, that's one point six million we're reserving for that. The next one is still in fall, classroom wing additions. We've already bid that out. We knew we were short two point eight million. So, we had budgeted under the old money, five point six million. It came in at eight million, so we need to take the difference in there and, and bring that out of fund balance. That's already pre-approved and so we needed to take the money out to finish that project. And then, the Pace Classroom Wing Edition, that's a new wing that's going in at Pace High School, two-story wing. And we put it, we, we allocated two point one five, one five eight million for that wing. Looking at the current rates, we're estimating that we're gonna be about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars short there just for, for one year. So, we're asking the board to bring in eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of fund balance. Totals be sixteen million eight hundred thousand out of fund balance to be allocated for construction that are non-bond issue.
So, the, the Pace Classroom Ring, what, what are we looking at the total cost now?
It would be two point one plus the eight fifty, we're looking at about three million dollars.
Thanks, sir.
Additional comments? Okay, motion and a second to approve item seventeen. All those in favor signify, raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Move on to the last item of the night.
Yeah.
Item twenty-five, recommend approval of, to purchase Health Quest materials and training from Quest International Annapolis Junction, Maryland in the amount of twenty-seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars from local and category campus and district. Wide funds for the two thousand and six, two thousand and seven school year items and services to be purchased are subject to the district's needs and funding sole source. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve item twenty-five, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Munoz.
Yes, in looking at this, it looks like it has a good pedigree. I would just like to, to, please explain who will use these materials? Who will be trained and where? Has the program been used in the past and by who? And, and, and who's the sponsor here at BISD?
Sure. Lehman, members of the board, column is Berta Pena curriculum. Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum to go ahead and address that.
Hi, this is Mr. Lehman, members of the board. The Health Quest program in BISD was adopted in nineteen eighty-six and it's been used from kindergarten all the way to the twelfth grade. We are asking tonight for twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars to pay for some training and materials for all new teachers that have, that come into our district. In addition, I think the, the bulk of the expense will be to train new addition. We have a new addition in the secondary curriculum which will require retraining. This is a character education that is compared to others as being superior because of the Spanish and the English versions. Students receive, each teacher receives a, a set of thirty workbooks that she works with her curriculum as well as teacher training, three, there's three-day training. If I may, I, the cost of the materials is five dollars and ninety-five per student. We have thirty class sets which equals to one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents per teacher. At seventy-two, we trained seventy-two teachers per session. And that comes out to the twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty-two. And just recently, our special ed department has adopted this curriculum, health curriculum for life skills classrooms. I hope that answers.
Yes, very, very good. Thank you, Ms. Pena.
Additional comments? Pena, how many hats do you wear? You've got so many hats. Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve item twenty-five. All those in favor signify, raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Motion carries. We'll move on to announcements, number twelve. Item forty-three, curriculum committee meeting to be held on Thursday, September seventh, two thousand and six at the administration building at five thirty. Item forty-four, next scheduled board meeting of the Board of Trustees is on Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and six at the administration building at five thirty PM. Additional, additional announcements, Mr. Lozanos?
Yes, just a reminder that football season is among us and we're getting ready. First game is Thursday. We have a game on Thursday and we have a game on Friday at Sam Stadium there. Oh, don't let it get to you, so you have your, your pass and, and your seating assignments or you're, or you're designated to. So, after the curriculum meeting, let's all go out to the, to the ballgame. First game, first home game this year. Porter. Porter against the West Laco East, right?
West Laco High School, huh?
And on Friday, it's playing. Hannah? Oh, is it Rivera? Rivera, PSJ, somebody's home. Hannah's going to Alice. Well, we'll be, Rivera's at home on, on Friday and, and Porter's at home on Thursday.
Ms. Galan, what are you gonna do when those residents play Brownsville? Where are you gonna sit?
I'm at other field.
Can I have your tickets? Can I have your tickets, sir? Anyway, any additional comments?
Yes, Mr. Lehman?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Galan, are we gonna get out of the curriculum within an hour?
You gotta tell Mr., ask Mr. Gilat.
Whatever he takes, sir.
I like that. Bring, bring the midnight oil, baby. Okay. There's a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor signify, raising hands, saying aye.
Aye.
Good night.